Does it reduce it by ninety percent? I've never heard any stats on that. I think that's a big deal. If it reduces it by ninety percent, that's, that's, that's great. But I have my, this Lakeview Airport is one of the busiest airports in the state. There's a lot of aircraft flying around here. Are those lights actually gonna kinda be on all the time anyway? You know, even if you have these aircraft sensors? I don't know the answer to that. It's, it's something that I think we need to have answers to. The, um, the property, I own property here. This is going to reduce my property values. I don't wanna live in a place where there's windmills. I'm gonna get outta here. The other thing, the last thing that I'll say is, I've been hearing that there's people on this board and, and that are, have actual contracts with, and, and I think that that is a very clear conflict of interest. That's ridiculous. To think that you can actually stand to gain monetarily and think that you can actually make a good decision on that? I think that's ridiculous. Now, if you, if you have the opportunity to get a contract and you don't actually have a current contract, that's a little more questionable. It's like, okay, so you're a big landowner, you have a bunch of acres, you could stand to get something. But if you have a current contract and you're actually thinking that you don't need to
Thank you.
That is ridiculous.
I think Trishai has one wrote down that she wants to give you.
Winfield Township and there's, um, a very clear, um, decisive, one way or the other. I have a real problem with all of you that sign contracts that have lined your pockets. That's great. That's wonderful. Woo-hoo kicks to you. But you do let it take and impact your decision on property lines and setbacks and how many. And it's clear because if further out the requirement is for the setbacks, the less windmills you get. So, oh my goodness, you'd get a little bit less money in your pocket. And that's really, really shameful. Number two, besides you all getting money in your pockets, what is this doing for the community? Where is this electricity going? Are we gonna get reduced rates on our electricity? We gotta look at all things. I mean, seriously? You guys are lining your pockets, but yet this energy's gonna be sold to what? Detroit? And so can we get any of this energy? Do we get a reduction in our electricity bill? Hell, no, we don't, but we gotta look at these damn things that you all lock because, you know, jingle jangle in your pockets.
Anybody else?
Doug Johnson, Ample, Michigan. I know all you guys personally and, uh, I love y'all. I say prayers for you. But have you guys ever sold a car or a vehicle or a load of milk or, or, or whatever you guys have sold? Have you ever got hoodwinked? I got hoodwinked. Oh, you've got hoodwinked in the audience. Now, when you guys lay down in bed at night, smile, Dale. You haven't smiled all night. Come on, Dale. You can do it. Get me a smile, Dale. There you go. Hi to you, Dale. There's nothing I can say or do to have you guys change your mind on your wind ordinances because that's the way it is. But I just wanna remind you guys, when you lay down in bed at night, to think of all the times in your life you've been hoodwinked. And I believe Apex just may be hoodwinked. No, I think, I think you guys wanna think about getting hoodwinked. We've all been hoodwinked and there is a possibility that Apex could be giving us a hoodwink.
Anybody else?
Hi. Um, Judy Blumer, uh, Winfield Township. I've been to a few of these meetings. I haven't been able to make it to all of them. Um, I think the first and second or third time, um, I came up and I told you about, uh, when we first moved here and people have come to visit us from all over the state and even other parts of the country. They have been so impressed with Winfield Township and we, I do live at Indian Lake, but they think it's beautiful. I now have six families that are asking me to watch for houses that come on the market for them to buy up here. Um, one of them almost grabbed one, but I did tell her about the wind turbines coming. And I'm kinda not recommending them to do anything until we know what's gonna happen. I also wanna bounce off what the, um, one gentleman talked about, the taxes. The property taxes that everybody pays here, um, and how much that has gone up. I know for me it's gone up exponentially every year. And this township benefits from that. If my property goes down, everybody's property goes down and we're all selling and moving. Y'all lose all of that amount of income and township money. I mean, I don't know why just a few are benefiting from the turbines coming in. I, I honestly am really kind of affronted by it. My last point is reading a lot of research about the, um, health, um, impact. And I am very concerned about so many being so close to such a populated area. And how many of us is that gonna affect? And the bird migration. Oh my gosh. I don't know. Uh, there's a lot to consider and it, it really doesn't balance out for me at all. It, I, I'm really concerned about it. So, that's my minute.
Okay, last chance. Anybody else?
Ben Reynolds, Douglas Township. I came here tonight, I had no intention of speaking, but there's been some references to lawyers. And I've been going to meetings, a lot more planning commission and board meetings in the past year and a half than I have in my entire life. This township and surrounding townships all pertaining to this. Starting to see a pattern. Some of the townships that have wrote in ordinance that takes their citizens into consideration, what they want, their safety, they've been writing ordinance for well under ten thousand dollars. The planning commissions and boards that want the turbines, spending sixty, eighty thousand dollars on a lawyer to steer things pro turbine to let them in. Now, what people want, he's trying to steer things out there. You can't deny it. You know what you're doing it. We all know you're doing it. The lawyer over to Douglas is doing it. Spending tens of thousands of dollars. And as you guys go down to Apex wishlist and try to pass an ordinance that fills that, when it goes into referendum, you can tell Albert, well, we tried, sorry.
Albert's nothing but a kind man.
Hey, Brent.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, at this time we'll close public comment in regards to the hearing. So also we'll close the public hearing. At this time, the planning commission will discuss the proposed ordinance. Uh, Kyle, do you wanna highlight some of the red line changes?
Sure, I can do that. Um, I don't know if you wanna go over some of the, I have some questions written down from the, the audience that might be helpful to go through. So the first, um, there's, many of the, many of the comments were in forms of statements, but I'm, I am gonna take some of the statements and I think, put them in question format to see, um, that, in a way that might be beneficial for, for the, the public. So the first is, um, uh, the mention of the article related to bird strikes. Uh, of course, that is very disappointing news to hear anything like that. I will say for the, um, or current ordinance, if you look at, let's see, I'm gonna work off the red line for, uh, the planning commission's sake. If you look at, um, page five, so page five does, and, and we did get comment from, uh, a member of the public related to environmental assessment, uh, that this language related to environmental, uh, assessment, at the township's request, an applicant challenges an environmental assessment, assessing the potential impact of your proposed wind energy facility on endangered species, uh, on endangered species, eagles, birds, plants, and other wildlife. So that is one change that I think the planning commission has directed, um, me to make at the last meeting. As well as if you look at, going to, again on page five, so there's a requirement for, um, essentially any developer to apply and receive all required federal permits. And I've read that, I can't tell you the number of people who have sent me that article over the past week and throughout the weekend. Um, I think this article was even covered by the New York Times, uh, potentially today. There is a requirement that, that speaks to federal permits. And it's my understanding that, that, uh, developer did not receive the federal permit. So if they were, let's say, I mean, we're taking so many steps ahead, but the way this ordinance works, if, if someone did not obtain permits that were otherwise required by a different level of government, they would be violating the wind ordinance and, uh, potentially be subject to any site plan or special use permit being revoked and, uh, nicked. Going on to safety, uh, safety concerns generally related to, I think, ice section as well as safety road setbacks, um, I think the trustee brought that up. To go to, again on page five, another question about the planning commission required the submission of an emergency and safety plan. Some of that, um, requires, it, it requires an applicant to address how it would ensure safeguards against turbine malfunctions and the setbacks of turbines from adjacent properties and are sufficient. So typically how these projects work in communities that, that have these projects is a developer would apply for a project and submit a variety of application material in which the township would hire an engineer or a planner to determine whether that, the material's sufficient or they could require additional studies. So I think this tries to front safety concerns. And this is something that is not in, I, I know that there's references to other ordinances. There's, this is something not in those ordinances among, uh, a variety of other things. Going on, going on to your, um, I think there were a number of comments from, uh, a member of the public related to how this ordinance interacts with the sawmills and, and some sort of, uh, I would say technical, uh, formatting issues with the, or formatting allegations related to the ordinance. So, uh, I believe it's, I, I've looked at this a number of times. I originally had this ordinance drafted at, as WW. And I believe from the, the zoning ordinance that I looked at, in terms of, the zoning ordinance that I saw from the township, I believe it's, uh, it's appropriate to, to make it VB. And I think if you look at the red lines through November and, and January, you may have seen a change where I, I changed the labeling. However, um, just as a general principle, I think for the planning commission, zoning doesn't necessarily work. So if you label two sections VB, uh, let's say that was the case and I can double and triple check that. I, I did when I was drafting this, that was the case, you wouldn't lose an entire, you know, you wouldn't lose an entire section of your zoning ordinance or something like that. I believe when you date, um, the, the zoning ordinance does have dates of amendments. Typically you would date those if they were adopted, you know, this, this is a proposed ordinance of being either recommended or not recommended. You wouldn't necessarily date an amendment, um, that is not being recommended as well as there's, I think there's a notice of adoption. Although I don't think it's for the, the public has, has received, but there is a notice of adoption that would date, um, when the ordinance was adopted, if it were to be adopted. Some other questions, so talks about thirty, the ordinance at, let's see, page eleven, I believe. So looking at the planning commission's copy, if you're looking at your red line, it would be thirty-two in the top left. Continuing enforcement, uh, ordinance escrow, there's a question. Okay, so let's say the, remember, the planning commission, the continuing ordinance enforcement escrow fund is if, let's say you would have a project, it would be a fund that would be held in escrow to allow the township to independently investigate complaints and sound complaints or any, you know, ordinance violations, um, at a, at cost of an applicant so the township is not expending its own money. There is a question, uh, after thirty days, if that fund runs out, they have to replenish. What happens if they do not replenish? Well, they would be violating the special use permit. Special use permit could be revoked. You could take legal action and all the remedies under the zoning ordinance and potentially even request, uh, the land use to be essentially shut down until they, they replenish. If, I wouldn't say that would be a smart, um, tactic by a developer to not replenish a, an escrow account like that, but, um, that would be the remedy. Going on to page thirteen. Let's see, thirteen, five C, SLUP limitation. If you look at, uh, did it, did it, did it, did it? Sorry, some of this is, I'm working off the red line and I have references to the other ordinance. So if you look at the, so SLUP limitation, so on the non-red line, so seventeen, if you look at the very bottom, I think the comment was, this is a complete sentence. The township may limit the duration of a special land use permit for a met tower to facilitate removal of the tower after data collection. Um, I know the copies presented to the public were scanned. Uh, I know that they were converted to PDF. I don't see a period. Um, I'll double check and I can, I can see if the period is in the word copy or not. Um, I think that's a change that we can make. So those are the, the technical questions, I think, from the public. Going on to, why is my property not in this, um, there's a map that is not, uh, part of the ordinance, but I think has been prepared, uh, to reflect what the ordinance language says? My property is rural residential. Why is, why is my property on this map being reflected as not rural residential? I would say the way the ordinance is written, the ordinance uses text and it prohibits, it prohibits, if you, well, it's actually on page, page one. It prohibits the land use in anywhere that is not ag and within that utility, um, energy area. So if you are zoned rural residential, but based on the, the, the current zoning map, the map of the township, I'm not sure how this map was prepared, uh, a wind turbine could not be placed on your property. So the, the language of the ordinance would govern not, um, what appears to be a voluntary map or depiction, uh, resembling the ordinance. So the, the map, that map would not be incorporated in the ordinance because the zoning districts can change. So the, the, the ordinance uses text. It doesn't use, it doesn't use a map, uh, that's, uh, for that, that aspect. In terms of ADLS, I think there was a question about how it works. So, you know, I, right now, I think there's potentially two ADLS systems in, in Michigan. And I'm not gonna pretend to be a, you know, a technical expert on, hey, how ADLS works. Um, what the closest one I think would be near Carson City. And how it's been explained to me, at least, is there is, uh, transponders in the airplanes that would trigger the tower as well as radar. And it's a set different distance. And I think, I believe there's four systems approved by the FAA to do that. How it would practically work in an area, of course, I think as the gentleman noted, would depend on the air traffic in your area. How, you know, if you have more air traffic, presumably the lights would be on more. And how the, how any project was configured. And, and those are two unknowns. So you would typically know how the ADLS would work if someone were to apply for a project. Let's say you have, I mean, you were taking so many steps ahead, but let's say you have an ordinance. Someone would apply, they would have to apply the site plans. You would know where all of the, the turbine locations are. You would know where the ADLS radar equipment is. And then you would essentially ask the, the app, you would know what system they're picking from FAA. So there's a lot of variables. And then you would know based on that, presumably how the system works. But I can't, you know, how the system would work in your particular area. But I can't tell you exactly, you know, how it would work in this area because that's, that's so many, that there's so many variables. I would suggest if you wanna get a general idea, there are folks, I think, that, um, I think Carson City, well, I know Carson City is relatively close by. And you could ask the people there how their ADLS system works and approximately how, how much, how many, you know, how the percentage that the lights are off.
Excuse me? Okay. Well, I appreciate the, I appreciate the comment, but I don't, I, I think I do know a little bit about it because I was involved in the zoning of that project, but.
Now you've had a chance to talk. Now you're trying, you can go back to Sidney Township.
I go wherever I want, sir.
Okay.
Who are you to tell him to go to Sidney Township?
Who are you?
Okay. So on that note, let's move on to other questions that were presented during the public hearing.
Yeah, let's drag it out and drive, drive up theme.
Let's see. Um, feathering, I think feathering was mentioned with, along with the bird concerns, um, as well as a comment that, that, you know, I allegedly made. So avian detection system, I understand that's what, uh, Maple Valley Planning Commission has recommended. When I mentioned feathering is, um, kinda explain this in a way. So when a wind developer applies for a wind project, they have to get a number of, they have to get a number of permits, including typically they consult with the US Fish and Wildlife Service. And the US Fish and Wildlife Service and Michigan DNR will recommend a number of different things depending on the area. Uh, some of them include feathering of the turbine blades that, uh, you know, feathering is a technique that I understand is used for noise, but I also understand that it's a technique that could be used for avian collision. So that, that was the, the context behind that and I hope that helps in, in some ways. Um, there are many different things that they may require a developer to do and it's project by project and it's also, you know, that's, that's a state for federal regulation. Those were the questions I had from the public hearing. Would you like me to go through the red lines of the ordinance that were changed, um, since? Yeah, let's go through the, let's go through the changes. All right, so I'm gonna work off the red line. The red line begins on your page twenty-one or twenty-two on the top left of your packet. So first page twenty-two, the change is adding met towers. That was a comment or direction from the planning commission to allow met towers by special land use permit, subject to their own regulations when someone is only applying for a met tower and not a wind project generally. So the, okay, so page one of your copy and page twenty-two of the, uh, the board's copy up here. They're not, they're the, they're the exact same, but they show the changes from the last meeting.
This is the proposed ordinance?
Yes. Look at sub O, special land use met tower.
Put on the internet, March twenty-three.
Okay, yes. Do you see where it says met tower at the bottom? The planning commission to help them has changes from what they had in March as a red line. So a red line is when you compare the two. And I'm trying to work with them to look at the red line because it's easier for them to understand because they've had a copy of this ordinance or a, you know, an ordinance at, at some point for, shoot, I don't know, I think in November they had probably their, uh, one that somewhat resembled this. Thank you. So going on to page twenty-four on the top left, and it should be page three that the public may have, could alter by a little bit, but you will see that the term wind energy utility area is defined. So this is, uh, the area that the planning commission has decided that would, it would like to exclude essentially any development of wind from in the ag district. So it bounds, um, following area, western boundary of the township, north to Yankee Road, east to North Bailey Road, and south to the portion of Deener Road that runs east to west in the township to create, create a complete rectangular boundary with the presumption that the roads, uh, connect with each other because they actually don't. So that language is in the ordinance. It's reflected in some ways on, on this map, or I think in, completely on this map other than the potential issue that the gentleman noted, uh, where it may not have a rural residential on it. The other boundary it talks about is at least one half mile from the water's edge of Winfield Lake and, uh, Crotway. So that is, uh, that's the change to add that in text. And it evolves with the ordinance. So if the ag district gets smaller, the wind energy utility area gets smaller because it can only, it can, uh, or not, yes, the wind energy utility area gets smaller because items could only presumably be, if the ordinance were adopted, cited in the ag district. Rural residential gets larger, same effect. And, and you use text because it can evolve with the ordinance. Going on to page twenty-five on the top left, should be four for the public. You'll see that there were a number of headings essentially added to, to help, I think, with clarity for the reader. Um, there's also, if you look at two A, there's a change to add, and to obtain a special land use permit. The intent of this is to show that any person who is applying for such a project would have to follow all of the other zoning ordinance requirements, including general site plan review and special land use, uh, permit review. I think that's something that sometimes gets a little bit lost. Um, you cannot view the wind ordinance in isolation. You have to read the rest of the zoning ordinance. And there are many different provisions in the zoning ordinance, such as the special land use permit review that has discretionary standards. Is the land use, um, compatible with, with, uh, adjacent properties? A variety of different things. So remember, this, this process is zoning for a land use, not zoning for a project. And it's designed to be in some ways flexible. Page twenty-six added the emergency and safety plan. Uh, I think I just, I just talked about that, but it's a requirement for an applicant to, to show that basically general emergency such disaster response, fire protection, um, is aware of the project and that there's a plan to service any emergencies that could happen from the project, as well as there's a requirement for information because there is a request from the public and, and on the planning commission of whether setbacks, setbacks are sufficient. And there's a requirement to get application materials to, to show that those are sufficient uh, in the event of turbine malfunctions or other, uh, items that could happen. And presumably you would have an expert, the township, let's say this ordinance was being applied, that could determine whether, uh, uh, application materials are, uh, adequate or not. Five, or going down on to page twenty-six, this is page five for the public, environmental assessment requirement, or, uh, the township can request an environmental assessment, including endangered species, uh, eagles, birds, which has been in the news recently. And then also importantly, there's also a section, upon reasonable request, the planning commission can require an applicant to submit additional application materials, including reports that are reasonably related to demonstrating compliance with the standard of the zoning ordinance. What this means, or what this could be applied to, is there were comments from the public that talk about, you know, my, my Lakeview, what do the aesthetics look like? Uh, there are many discretionary factors in the zoning ordinance, such as compatibility with adjacent uses where, uh, the planning commission or the township could use this provision to say, please provide visual representations of what, uh, you know, if there were a turbine being proposed, what that would look like from, you know, Winfield Lake or Indian Lake. And, and that's, uh, that's sometimes required by, or sometimes requested by townships or, or other local units of government for projects like this, to safeguard an aesthetic. Going on to page six, this is the ice detection safety system requirement that we talked about last meeting, that was added. So page six, uh, twenty-seven on the top left for the planning commission. Requires installation of ice.
Requires installation of ice detection safety system on each wind turbine. The township could waive the requirement if the applicant demonstrates in a mechanical or other function of the turbine. Presumably your, your engineer or, or someone else would determine the adequacy of that. Prevents the risk of injury to persons or property caused by or ice formations or, or ice throw is, uh, what is commonly referred to. Going on to page 29, uh, top left, page eight for the public. Should be J, insurance cover, uh, coverage. Acquire this requirement for a wind energy facility, an applicant and, and, uh, an owner to have a $2 million per occurrence damage to persons and property insurance, uh, policy for any project that is tied to inflation for $20, $22. Could change that to, depending on timing, uh, current dollars based on, uh, price index. Reason for this is, is some communities have determined that they don't want risk related to, let's say, you know, there's an issue with a turbine, someone's suing the turbine company and they decide to sue the township as well. Whether this is, uh, some added protection in addition to what is normally governmental immunity for local units of government in Michigan. Going on to further down on page 29, setbacks, page eight for the public. Increase of, uh, uh, the habitable structure setback to, to two times tip height or 1,320 feet from a thousand. Going to property line setbacks, a clarification that the property line setback essentially waiver of, if let's say two participating properties want to put a property or a turbine on a property line because it may be beneficial for agricultural activities to not have a turbine in the middle of a farm field. This would allow that, but it clarifies that that does not, that does not pertain to non-participating lots of properties. Going to 30, page nine for the public. Just a technical word change of, uh, the sound as measured at the exterior of a habitable structure. Going to, um, let's see here, page 33 in the top left, 12 for the public. This is the, uh, regulations that would govern if someone were to want to apply for a met tower only. I don't think your current zoning ordinance, or I shouldn't say I don't think. Your current zoning ordinance does not have a provision for, uh, specifically for met towers in, in detail like this. So this would allow someone, if they wanted to apply for only a met tower or met towers, that they would not have to get a special use permit for a wind energy facility, but for a met tower. And it names a variety of different requirements that they would have to submit. So going on to page 13 for the public, 34 for, for you guys. It would require an applicant to demonstrate they have land rights, uh, give a construction.